From your machine?
I can.
Thank you, everyone for joining us this evening. It's January tenth of two thousand and twenty-two. We're here for the City of Philometz City Council Work Session. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the North Eleventh Street Local Improvement District and funding options for those types of projects. But first, we're going to get started with a roll call.
Catherine Bisco. Here. Ruth Causey.
Here.
Matt Lehman.
President.
David Lo.
Eric.
Theresa Nielsen.
Here.
Jessica Andrade.
President.
Chad Jones.
President.
And let the record show that staff attending is Chris Workman, City Manager, City Attorney Jim Brewer, and myself, Ruth Post, City Recorder.
Thank you so much. So now we're discussing the North Eleventh Street Local Improvement District, the consideration thereof. And Chris, do you want to go ahead and introduce the topic and walk us through?
I will. Thank you, Mayor Jones. So prepared the memo that went out. Was it on Friday? I guess it was. So just prior to the weekend. So hopefully you had some good reading over the weekend in addition to the packet. Try to just break this down by topic, just to facilitate discussion. I'll presume that everybody had a chance to read through this. I won't go through it in a lot of detail. But really just broke it down first into, you know, how are we selecting projects? And we've heard some comments. As this has gone to council and to Public Works Committee, then back to council and why are we even looking at Eleventh Street? Why aren't we looking at say Ninth Street, for example, or some of these others? So just wanted to give a little bit of background on how we got to North Eleventh Street. You know, this has been a project that's been identified in the last two years in the capital project that was budgeted for for funding and engineering last year. And then this year, additional engineering and construction. And then we've got anticipated budget for construction for next fiscal year. That would be in the plan as well if we're going to proceed forward. So construction projects, summer construction projects straddle fiscal years. And so the process we begin doing more regularly is having some of that construction fall in one fiscal year, which would be the first part of the summer. Anticipate that you're going to have some construction costs at the onset. And then having some construction costs at the, in the second fiscal year of the project in order to finish the project up at the end of the summer. So that was kind of anticipated for this project as well. So just again, tried to lay that out with the capital projects lists specifically looking at the CIP for two thousand and twenty-one slash two thousand and twenty-two. I guess I'll pause there. Is there any questions about Eleventh Street making it a priority or any questions on how we got to make it Eleventh Street a priority? Hearing any. So I'll move forward to the next session. So section. So tools for paying for infrastructure projects. It's quite an information here again, kind of summarizing a couple of meetings with the Public Works Committee and discussions that we've had into one memo. I did try to provide some of the feedback from the Public Works Committee. Recognize, I think it was, I'm not a hundred percent for sure. I just got it on my desk, but it looks like Counselor Bisco was the either provided the summary today on the different projects. Does that, did that come from you? Okay, sorry. I just, I have a, I have a copy, a paper copy of it. I didn't see who it come from. So that got submitted today as well with some Counselor Bisco or Chair Bisco, the chairs of Public Works Committee, some of her comments as well. Didn't want to imply too much or too little. So just try to give a kind of cursory information that was provided to Public Works Committee. Some bullet points on some merits and drawbacks of each of the different funding types. And my kind of synopsis of this whole thing is my opinion that, you know, rather than say the city is going to use this tool and this tool for all projects. I just want the council to be aware that there's a wide array of different types of funding mechanisms that we can use. And really the better practice would be to identify a project and then you know, look to all of these different funding tools to see which one or two would be the best for that specific project based on any number of factors. So that's kind of my preference going through as opposed to trying to settle on a policy that just selects, you know, this is the funding source we're always going to use for infrastructure. I just think that kind of limits us and ties our hands a little bit. So again, I don't want to be too brief on this section. I'm happy to answer your specific questions council members have about any of these. And I also want to make sure I give time for specifically for members of the Public Works Committee to weigh in on this section. So maybe we can pause and do that now.
I really appreciate that overview. I think that it's great for all of us to be able to see what tools we have available to us in terms of funding. So I really appreciate just having this as a as a document that we can access as we move forward. So thank you so much for pulling that together.
And of course, I didn't add, you know, ARPA funding or one-time funding. I mean, there's others. This, this isn't total comprehensive, right? There's, there's other funding sources that may come around that aren't on here. So I don't want to pretend that this is an exhaustive list. There, there may be other funding opportunities that come available that we could apply for different grants, different loans, that type of thing. So but these are kind of generally speaking, if you're looking at, you know, leaning towards which tools do we like, which is kind of the, the mantra, I think the Public Works Committee took, which of these programs do we like and think have value and which ones would probably be less favorable and would be less interested in? I was kind of what I tried to capture in my comments here at least.
Yeah, well, thank you. And Chair Bisco, did you want to summarize the comments that you provided to the council further today? I mean, I read them, but I don't know if you just wanted an opportunity to summarize those.
I can. It was, thank you for that opportunity. Can you hear me? Okay, because my screen just went funny. There we go. Okay. Really, given the shortness of time from our Public Works Committee on the sixth, it was difficult to try and pull that all together any sooner than you got it. It landed about six AM this morning. So what, what I did is I really took the summary of what we had been reviewing, our first shot of that overview was in October. And just tried to summarize what we had gone through with the Public Works Committees. Work over October, November, December, and January is really where the bulk of it was. And it was a combination of local improvement district on North Eleventh Street as it stands and recommendations that were provided. But it was also the overview that we had looked at at the City Council in April. We drilled down a little bit further on that and staff had provided us some extra guidance, a little bit more benchmarks that we could work with. Council Brewer was made available during those meetings as well to try to buffer any of that information. And that's kind of some of what you are seeing in that document. What the Public Works Committee really did was look at what's a viable option that could be used. I don't know that we came with any conclusive decision that there was any one solution. And what I tried to capture in that document that I provided was that there's a tremendous amount of cities, streets that we're looking at. There are forty-two unimproved streets within the city of Philoma that were identified by staff and provided for us to consider. Of those, five of them are priorities and one of those priority streets is North Eleventh Street. The others are provided in this document as well, but because it wasn't put out before the public, I'll just run down those quick. So it's North Eleventh Street, North Ninth Street, South Sixteenth Street, Cedar, and I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going to miss that last one, I guess. Of those, North Eleventh Street and North Ninth Street were the two that we talked about probably the most. I noticed the capital improvement plan for twenty-one and twenty-two is now including more extensive information on South Sixteenth Street. So I'm presuming that's been a local improvement district conversation as well. I think one of the biggest things that we came away with was that local improvement districts, number one, are not even sort of simple. They're not even moderately simple. They're extremely complex. There are a lot of factors that would go into any number of these streets. As to how do you reach that measure of benefit, both present and future for properties? It is not a simple task to discuss. It's not a simple project and concept even to grasp. And so I tried to capture, not only I tried to merge in my document what staff had provided and kind of a summary of what the Public Works Committee had discussed. Captured also some other information that was those forty-two streets, how they break down as far as funding, looking at twenty-one to twenty-four million rough dollars in streets alone. That does not capture sewer or water infrastructure costs, which are also identified in this document. And so you're seeing that we're talking some pretty substantial numbers. Part of the other information that I know that we were missing is local improvement district specific to North Eleventh was that there are peripheral properties that could be developed at any point. I know that one of them that was identified, there's seven of them that I was able to find by looking at Benton County's ArcGIS mapping systems. You could identify where those properties were and those maps really helped because we were talking very vague terms. We knew there were other properties out there. And what we weren't able to capture was what that actually looked like when you were talking about size of properties. What I was able to put together for this council to consider is that looking at those maps, looking at Benton County's assessments of those properties. Those seven properties come somewhere in the range of ten acres worth of land. In looking at, there's a concept drawing that's been put together for that North Tenth Street property, which will have access to North Eleventh. And is, is landlocked presently. That property can develop thirteen houses on it by that concept drawing that's, I didn't provide in this. I just thought I would. Twenty-four pages already seemed like a lot. I know a good chunk of it was already provided in the packet. And when you merged it, it got to be pretty large. But that concept drawing shows that we have thirteen houses that could be built on that adjacent property to four fifty-eight. When we look at the five acres on North Eleventh Street, that will certainly impact the street as well. And so ultimately on a probably average, I wouldn't say overly conservative, but I don't think overly generous either. We're looking at a potential of for the twenty-six homes that already exist there, we're looking at adding potentially another fifty-five to sixty when you look at those lots that could be developed. So when we go back to Philometz municipal code, we go back to the ORSes that, that require us to look at benefit. I do think it's important that we consider that. Part of the challenge that we continue to run into of all of the proposals is that we had really wide ranges of assessments, anywhere from, you know, the one house in particular had assessments that ran anywhere from four thousand dollars up to fifty thousand dollars. The house itself is valued at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so we kept running into those disparities and which is why there was no conclusion that we could draw where that North Eleventh Street LID really made the best sense. I do want to make it a point to acknowledge that the Campbell Grant being used in this manner is not what we felt was the intent of that grant necessarily, or a good faith use of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I understand that it would lift some of the liability of this local improvement district. However, that's really a citywide kind of bike pedestrian type of grant, and it just doesn't seem like that fits well here. And then beyond that, I'm willing to, you know, if there's questions and if there's, there's ways that I, I don't know that I would say that I'm the most well-versed in this, but I've done a lot of research on this. We had, our house lives on the North F Road District. So we're familiar with this process coming into this, but I've spent the better part of the last year in conversations with community members discussing what this looks like and what this might mean for this community. So I'm happy to try and answer any questions if I can point you in the right direction. I'm certainly not going to claim that I'm the expert. But we spent a fair amount of time on this and this document alone was several hours just to put together to try and give the council some sort of a a little bit of an extra bump of, of knowledge that just takes a lot of time to learn. And I guess I'll just leave it at that at this point.
Thank you, Counselor Bisco. And Counselor Cause, I see you had a comment or question?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. I just wanted to ask Counselor Brewer if he could weigh in with respect to the best practice in determining which property should be included in an LID. Obviously, the engineer's report did not include as many properties as Counselor Bisco has mentioned.
Well, so LIDs under both the state law and the city ordinance require a special benefit, not a general benefit. And, and I think that's this is where the different funding mechanisms cross with who might have to pay for it. And it, and it, and it is tremendously complicated. So for example, a road district does not have to have a special benefit. So a road district could be, and I've talked to county council about this because road districts are really a county issue. A road district can reach out a very long ways from properties that might currently front on that road. And say, yeah, these, these properties are all going to funnel in this direction and we can, we can reach them with that taxing authority to. It's complicated to do that. It's, it's harder than just saying, yeah, that's what it is. You do end up having to have an election for that. With a local improvement district, you're really looking for special benefit, and that's where you get the special assessment. And so when we talk about you, you could go to an undeveloped property and say, yes, that's going to benefit from this. It would be possible to include it within a local improvement district. It then becomes kind of a trick to say, well, at its zoning, do we take its highest density? Do we take its lowest density? Do we take an average density? What is the special benefit for that undeveloped property? It, it's possible to do. You would not want to have disjointed local improvement districts. It needs to be contiguous. I hope that answered your question. I
Thank you very much for that, Jim. And Counselor Lehman.
Yeah, along similar lines. It seemed like the discussion about using density or number of dwelling units on a property was not acceptable for determining what the assessment is. Or is, or is that a possibility to use? You know, maximum density at full buildout as the baseline for doing assessments.
It, it's possible to use density because really what you're looking at is trips at that point, not, not density. And then, and then you're going to somehow calculate what the frontage improvement should be based on the number of trips. And you're going to calculate that throughout the whole local improvement district. It's a, it's a I don't want to say it's impossible to do that. It is theoretically possible. It's legally possible. It's a challenge. And it's, it's away from the norm, which is simply to use geography because it's easier that you can measure distance and you can measure depth and you get to numbers of square feet or something and assess equally across that. When we add density or, or zoning as the possibility there, then it becomes an even more complicated thing that you'd still calculate either linear footage or square footage. And then you would end up having to lay over the top of that, well, how many trips do you get per square footage or fractions of trips per square foot?
And a follow-up question. Is it possible to assess a property that is not yet developed for future development?
Yes.
If they develop within the next ten years?
Yeah, I've, I've, I've actually litigated that particular question where someone had no intention and I don't believe the property is developed today still. But it was assessed for a sewer that ran along the frontage. It was a corner property, so two, two frontages. And it was agricultural land that they did not intend to develop. I don't believe they have yet, but, but it is served by sewer and it could be developed at any time.
Thank you. And Counselor Lo, you had a question?
I do. I guess hypothetically, kind of going back a year, what you're saying, Castle Brewer. So if the council approved going forward with the local improvement district, but we wanted to consider the issues that we've just been talking about, the complexity and so on. How do we proceed? I mean, who does that kind of due diligence to make sure that we're okay legally?
Well, I do the due diligence for the legal part. I would work with the city engineer to come up with what the assessment methodology would be in that case.
Okay. I don't know if, if you can render an opinion about how if it's worth that effort. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around the, the whole implications of a
Well, what, what I would say is the more complicated that you make the assessment methodology, the more likely it is that it's going to be subject to a challenge.
And at any point
The more difficult it is for us to explain it to a court, the less likely it is that we're going to be successful.
Okay. And if, if I could, if the, if the council proceeds down that road and it does become very, it becomes too complex and just too whatever, we can stop that, right? We can not approve the district.
That's correct. You can always abandon.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chris?
Yeah, just on that note, and I, I was kind of getting there in the memo, kind of the next section after you get through the different funding sections, and we've kind of shifted into looking more specifically at local improvement districts. So I'm looking bottom of page eight of my memo, kind of talks about the process for establishing a local improvement district. And there was some confusion here over the last couple of months, so just to be clear. So we've, you know, the city's not taken any steps to establish a local improvement district on North Eleventh Street. That takes a, a separate motion to do that. What the council did do was ordered the city engineer prepare an engineer's report so that the council could look at that and help make a determination whether a local improvement district should be established or not. And at that point, the City Council directed the Public Works Committee to take a closer look at all different kind of funding mechanisms, including the LID with the assistance of that engineer's report to help in the conversation and looking and considering and assessing local improvement district for that street. So to this point, the council hasn't really taken even that first step. We have just kind of kind of looking more generally. At the same time, we have been looking at specific assessments that could be considered for North Eleventh Street again as a way of kind of providing talking points and, you know, what if kind of scenarios and how it could look if we were to move forward. So but at this point, just to be clear, the council's not taken that initial, made that initial motion to proceed with special assessment or with improvements on North Eleventh Street by way of special assessment. That would need to come first. Following that, then what staff would be looking for would be some direction to go back to the city engineer and to amend or update the engineer's report that was previously done. And then I provided a list of there of additional considerations that we can talk about tonight. But we would want to get an updated engineer's report that comes before the council again. The council can review it. See if you like the amendments to the methodology. Look through all that. If it's acceptable, the City Council would accept the engineer's report. And then the next step would be to set a date for a public hearing. And that's when all of the neighbors would be invited. Anybody that was assessed or included in the assessment and the general public would be invited to that public hearing and to testify. They may have insights that the city engineer, the city council members or staff don't know about that they want to share. They may feel like their assessments unfair or inequitable for one reason or another. They could come and make that case. And then following that hearing, the City Council wanted to deliberate based on the testimony received and decide whether we need to update or amend the engineer's report again and have it come back again. If we need to abandon the project altogether. Or if we want to proceed and proceeding is another, it would be a formal resolution that would come before the council and be approved. And approval of that resolution is what would then trigger actually moving forward with the assessment, going out for bid, getting the bid and doing the construction. And then following the construction, we would have a second resolution. Once we know what the actual cost was, because again, remember the engineer's report is all based on the engineer's estimate, right? We don't actually know what the total project's project's going to be until we go out for bid, we finalize the construction project, figure out how much of the contingency, if anything was used, et cetera. And when the projects all closed out, we know what the actual cost ended up being, then we'll go through and do the actual assessment for all those properties based on what was in the engineer's report and approved in the resolution. We'd include provisions for repayment and that type of thing in that resolution and, and then kind of be completed and then start receiving the reimbursement payments throughout the, you know, the balance of it. So at any point along that process, the council can say, yeah, this doesn't make any sense anymore, or the council can kind of continue forward. But that's the process for forming the LID. It's not overly complicated, but there are several steps that the council would have to take formally. So and I'd get, I want to make sure the council's kind of clear on that process, that procedure. So are there any questions on that part of the formation of an LID and what it would look like, what's needed? So get a couple of hands up, Mayor Jones.
Yeah. So first, does anyone have a specific question that Chris just asked, or should I go to Council Brewer first? So, Council Brewer?
So one of the things that I did, didn't mention and that I should have as we look at impact and undeveloped property is you would also have to consider underdeveloped property. And so you might end up with a result that you, you're, you're not really looking for where a current existing housing stock of single-family homes or duplexes under the current zoning, they might have more, more potential development than what is currently there and their assessment would be equalized throughout the local improvement district. So you could end up with a single-family house that you could have a duplex, a triplex. It's got a large yard or the backyard. You could add another couple of structures there and that single-family house would be, if you use that kind of impact as part of your assessment methodology, then you should expect that you will have some places like that that are going to have a higher what, what they're going to feel like is this is a very high assessment for my modest, single-family house. And that's just a caution. It, it's not that it's impossible to do, but that it is going to be equalized throughout the local improvement district. So we're going to treat similarly situated properties in the same way. And it kind of divides out that way. And that may not be the effect that you want.
And the engineer's report would kind of get at that if we
That's correct.
Thank you. And Counselor Bisco?
So just a couple of comments, just observations through this process. I guess a, a question I'd, I'd like to know is what have we spent on engineering to get to the first engineering report? I don't know that I was ever able to get that information at Public Works. And I, I'm curious when we look at, let's have the engineers look at it again because as you'll note in the information I provided, but it's also in the December packet, Public Works Packet, excuse me. Is that first round of engineering report really is not being recommended to being used at all? And so I'm concerned about, do we want to revise something that is, is flawed in its development to begin with? Or do we want to look at something completely or, you know, fundamentally different? So is, do you, do we have that number, Mr. Workman, of what we've spent on engineering so far, specific to coming up with this report?
Yeah, I don't know the exact number. I know the initial quote was it'd be under four thousand dollars. And I know we stayed under that number. How close to it? I'm not sure where we got. I would say outside of the assessments that were provided, assessment A, B, and C, the different options. There's a lot of valuable information in that engineer's report, just identifying the properties, doing the entire project estimate, the cost estimate for the project is valuable. You know, looking at all the different assessed values for each of the properties. There's quite a bit of work that goes into this before we even start looking at assessments. And so you know, if, if the council's going to move forward with the local improvement district, I think it makes a whole lot of sense to start with the current engineer's report and amended as opposed to starting some new process. I think it makes a whole lot of sense to start with the current engineer's report and amended as opposed to starting some new process.
Thank you. Council Andrade.
Mayor Jones, point of order, I did have a couple of comments that I wanted to put before the council before you moved on, is that an option?
Go ahead.
So one of the things I'm wondering is when we're looking at this. The North 11th Street actually has some some smaller valued properties that are considerably lower than the average that we see in Philomath. All but one of them, as I see, are actually falling under $200,000. And so there's, there are, and that excludes the townhomes and any schools Heather Glenn. So when we look at the previous North 11th Street properties. 10 of them are falling under 200,000. If we drop it to 150,000, seven of them actually fall under that. So we're looking at trying to figure out how to make this assessment. I don't know how we come to, here again, we just went into that space where it's just not a simple answer. And I wonder how we would come up with an equitable measure of doing that for properties that cannot bear. You know, I mean, we can't, I don't know how we could actually ethically ask a property that's $120,000. To come up with 35 to $51,000 for a street. Of which they're not using any differently than the single family home down the road that's $500,000, for example. I know that was one of the concerns when we looked at these assessments. I also wonder if there's not a way for us to. Somehow backtrack this assessment idea that we're using. So we're already in that space where. We're looking at a local improvement district as the only option. I know the Public Works Committee was not given reserves, which just came up in December, excuse me, in January. That was kind of a last bit of information. And so we haven't really had the chance to evaluate what those reserves might actually be. We have also not, we were not given the information on the sewer and water line that needs to be improved in order to accomplish this. So this whole project is a little bit bigger than just the streets, it's somewhere landing in that one point. No, 2.48 million dollars is I think what it was when I put all the numbers to it for North 11th Street to be improved. So you'd want to do the sewer line and the water line together before you actually did the street improvement itself. I wanted to throw out this idea, just one that it. When we go back to the reimbursement district, I think enough of us are familiar with what happened in the end of 2020. And it is relevant to how we look at how we do funding of infrastructure. We ended up with a single family home being assessed 169,000, give or take. I don't have that number right in front of me, but we know it was right in that range. And that was a substantial assessment. And it's based on commercial usage of a property rather than single family home. I'm wondering if there's a way that we cannot do this where. We forward think this a little bit where we say, okay, we're willing to assess this much based on the value of these homes, based on this. The historically, what Philomath has done is linear footage, a combination of linear footage and. Square footage, which was one of the assessments that the engineer used. When we look at all these surrounding properties that are in high density, we've got a high, high demand for housing. You've got a very volatile profitable housing market right now. Is there a way for us to capture a certain amount for the homes that exist there right now? And then down the road, if we have, say, this five acre piece develop or we have this. Adjacent to the North 10th, to the North 10th Street property, which is right on the end of Pippa Lane. If we have those developed that, maybe they're not part of the LID, the way that we are forming it right now, but we have. Not SDCs like we currently have them. But we have some sort of funding mechanism where if you put 26 houses on that five acres. That you should be expected to bear some of the cost of the maintenance of the streets, the improvement of the street that has already taken place. You know, if we don't capture it in an LID right up front, can we capture it at the point of development? And we have a. It can't be an STC because we couldn't use it in the same way, but we had some sort of a bucket of money when we look at our budgets. And it's just a perpetual, when developments come in, they're just expected to pay a certain portion of the street that they will be impacting. In this example, it would be North 11th Street, and we don't really have that mechanism right now. We're capturing it in different ways, the reimbursement district, for example, captured it. So I do want to. Take care to look at the funding mechanisms that we did evaluate. Because I do think there are options in there that make sense for helping support street infrastructure. And I don't want, you know, I don't want to make sure that we get so micro here that we're only looking at North 11th Street as an example. Because obviously we have 42 other streets that need improvements. Obviously, we've got other funding mechanisms, the gas tax is one that I do think we should definitely point to as a council. But I don't think there's a simple answer or a simple, let's just move on with an engineer's report. I think that's premature in this conversation at this point. It's worthy of a bigger decision before we start talking about more dollars and more expenditures. Thanks for that opportunity to help share that. Again, it's just that bigger picture and it's things that we've gleaned over this last four months in these conversations.
Thank you. Counsel Andrade.
I wanted to bring up the reserves as well, because that was something that I had no idea about. I know I had asked about. So what happens if we go with an LID, but you know, people can't afford it? It's something to that effect and more or less I had not realized that it's just. What we're figuring out is how much the city wants to pay to upgrade this street. Assuming that we want to go through with this. I really like Counselor Bisco's idea. And I ask that. In whatever we end up deciding to do, whatever in future conversations about. You know, payment to upgrade. This street that we take the portion that Heather Glenn is responsible for out of. Whatever improvement is going on because they're. Subject to do that on their own, like they have to as part of their agreement. Both as a. Well, yeah, anyway, so.
Thank you. And one quick question, are we able to do an assessment based on the, on the existing tax assessments? Is that if we applied that equally, is that also an option? No?
I can.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think it'd be difficult because you're really not looking at actual benefit, right? Or any current or future, you're kind of capturing just current benefit, but not actual benefits. I think that one would be hard to defend.
Good, thank you. Counsel Kazi.
Yes, in the course of looking at the various options that were put forward by the city manager. We, some of which included property is funding. Only the cost of their sidewalks as would be required. For any homeowner, any property owner in this city. And I would like to ask if we took that approach. Would it be necessary to have an LID or would there be any advantage to have an LID? Counselor Brewer.
It, it, it wouldn't be necessary. And but it might be a tool that those property owners would like. And so they could come and ask the council, look, there's a financial advantage to us in. The economy is scaled, the single mobilization, demobilization. Hiring a single contractor to do all of this stuff, it'll be cheaper than my doing it individually along my frontage. And they, they can, as the ordinance clearly says. Property owners can always come to the city council and say, I'd like you to form a local improvement district. Because there's an advantage to me in doing that.
But I guess what I'm suggesting is could the city move forward with this project? Absent a local improvement district. And still assess those properties for their sidewalks.
It's a little different, you wouldn't be assessing the, those properties for their sidewalk. You'd be ordering them to complete the sidewalks. And then it's up to them to get it done in time, or then we go in and do it and they get leaned for that purpose.
If the current code is they'd have three years to complete their sidewalk improvements, once they've been notified by the city council.
So if I could continue, the LID simply allows you to get it done all at once.
It allows you to get it done at once and it allows. The city essentially to, to carry the cost of that improvement and receive payment over time. Or at some future point in the, you know, at some point in the future, if a lien, when the lien's placed on the home. So again, as Mr. Brewer said, there's some advantages to the homeowners and doing the LID at that point. Just on the financing it, right? You're going to have to have three years to come up with the money, you could take 10 years or 15 years to pay it off.
And if I could ask a follow up question. You know, if, if we undertake an LID, my understanding is that all the properties within the LID. Need to be treated the same way.
That's correct.
If. So that the only way for, if, if some properties are limited to the cost of their sidewalks. All properties would need to be limited to that cost.
Yes.
So in that instance, the Heather Glenn properties would not be required to fulfill their obligation. To do the three quarter street improvements.
Well, that's just a separate issue at that point. They would still have that obligation.
All right. I'll leave it at that.
Counselor Lehman.
Yeah, I've been thinking about this situation and this kind of circumstance we find ourselves in over the break. And I'm wondering if maybe we need to reframe the question a little bit. So I don't, I know Counselor Lo and Counselor Kazi were both on the. On the meeting that Campo had today where they were kind of talking about the regional transportation plan. And that kind of just drove it home in my mind that maybe we do need to reframe this conversation. So from my perspective, what I'm seeing is basically the state has taken away most of our autonomy. With regard to new development and even infill development for a large, to a large extent. And so I think that the question that nobody is really saying, but the one that we're really asking is. Do we want to resist that or not? And if we do want to resist that, is, is this conversation really about, about that instead? So to put it in easier terms, if we basically make it free for anyone to come in and do infill projects. In the city, I would imagine that there's going to be a lot of opportunity for people to come in and do that. And we will have these issues like on North 11th Street come up over and over again throughout the city. Or if we want to make it extremely difficult for people to do infill projects. We could do that through code changes and, and various ways of doing the assessments for infrastructure improvement. To make it rather difficult for people to do infill projects and things like that. And the reason why it really came home to me with the, with the discussion about the regional transportation plan. Is that, to be frank, the state has no intention of increasing capacity on the state road network at all. The city of Corvallis is, and the city of Philomath, between the two of them are going to put. Several hundred, two thousands of new houses all along the Highway 2034 corridor. And I know I already try to avoid that road as much as humanly possible. And it's going to put more stress on the local road network, whether that be city roads or county roads. And the state. Isn't, isn't considering that, I don't believe in their, in their programming for the transportation network. And I think that we're coming to a point where it's going to become very difficult for people in Philomath. To get around within our immediate region. And inviting more people to Philomath, and I'm not making a judgment on that one way or the other. I'm just saying, if we make a policy that invites more people to come to Philomath. Then we should suspect that we're going to have more congestion and more traffic on the roads that were not intended to have. That much traffic on them. And I'm, so I just want to consider if we need to frame the conversation in that context. Or if this is really just about, we want to make this road up to city standards and we want to figure out the best way for the people who live on that road. To, to get that benefit at the, at the cost that we think is fair.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lehman, for those words, thoughts. Counselor Bisco.
So I'm going to echo that appreciation, Counsel Lehman, because really you're pointing at that bigger, long range picture. And you're also recognizing and, and putting before this group as well. For those that weren't able to hear today's. Today's presentations in that the state is, it, there are a lot of things happening on a state level. That are going to ultimately come down and trickle down and affect Philomath, and part of that is housing. A part of that also is the emphasis in transportation that we are not looking to support vehicular traffic. And we're looking at new models of. More bicycle and pedestrian friendly, different models of housing that really discourage. Additional parking spaces. So when we look at that bigger conversation and how do you capture more housing with less parking, less vehicular access? Whether it's on the state level, on the county level, on the regional transportation, or just on our local streets. I guess I would ask this question of. Are we prematurely looking at, we want to rush local improvement districts is the model we're using right now? Without really looking at that long range planning of what Philomath long term is going to look like, because the state's going to require it. I know DLCD is talking about a lot of conversations of. It has to do with parking and it has to do with reducing parking based on housing. And, and that's just where it's going, and those are going to be decisions that are made that are outside of our control. That will require us to comply over time. So can we step back and say, let's pause the local improvement district or any other upgrades at this point? And let's look at that holistic level of development. Infill, increasing housing, but not necessarily increasing. Vehicle friendly housing. Those are our conversations that we're, are worth having. I do want to put out another part of, you know, we seem to be landing in local improvement district and not looking at, at other funding mechanisms at the moment. Which is okay, as long as we get to those other funding mechanisms. Which is any of these local improvement, say that we do decide to go back to local improvement district as a mechanism for funding. They do require us to come up with payment options and requirements. They are not liens that land in the county per se, they're liens that are carried by the city. And they do require a certain measure of. Accountability to payments, I guess is an easy way to say that. And that it does put folks that may be in fragile economic situations at risk of loss of house. And that does land in that ORS 221 space. And if you read that chapter, it's pretty extensive, but it's pretty clear also about the requirements of maintaining a payment schedule. So how we would build that out as a city is going to be important as well, being sensitive to the fact that these are not, these are not. Compared to the value of the homes, we're looking at pretty substantial assessments in many cases. And so I want to be sensitive to that as well. So back to supporting Counselor Lehman's conversation. I do think that pulling back and going, let's look at a bigger conversation might be relevant. If we're not going to do anything but move forward with LID, I do want to bring it forward that we're sensitive about how we do that funding as well.
Thank you, Counsel Bisco. I'll just add that. Everything on the table still, all the options that are before us have still not been finalized. So you could certainly apply an LID and not fund any of the projects or not assessing the projects in a way that. That were considered excessive by any person, we could consider funding the entire thing and paying for it with city funds. So everything is still on table, we haven't decided on a method or an approach. So I wouldn't say that we would be necessarily assessing them unduly at this point. Counselor Lo.
Yeah, going back to local improvement district and.
Yeah, going back to um local improvement district and hypothetical again, if one, if the council approved it, and then we go to the public meeting and so on, do we need to know what properties would be part of that district? So, you know, once again, we're saying, well, maybe there are other properties that are not necessarily in Eleventh Street that could be. Do we have to qualify those and know those before we would approve? Or I mean, at what point?
You need to have a geographic area that's going to be that that is going to be specially benefited by the improvement.
Okay, and so we should identify that or know that specifically before we approve?
Yes, that that would be part of it, and that would be part of what you would expect to get from the engineer's report is here are the properties that are specially benefited. Whether that's a transportation model or who's going to benefit from a water sewer line or stormwater.
Okay.
Doesn't matter that the nature of the improvement particularly in this.
Okay, so if I understand the sequence of events, uh, council could approve an L uh L I D. Um, get an engineer's report. The engineer's report then would tell us the properties that would be assessed. Is that correct? What would include that part of it?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
It would not be, you'd be initiating an L I D. You you don't approve it to the approvals at the end of the process.
Sorry, yeah, my mis- my misstatement, but but okay, so we initiate it. Uh, get the engineer's report. They tell us all of the folks that would be part of this assessment. Uh, but at that point, we have a better sense of who who's going to have to pay. And then can kind of go from there. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
And I have a follow-up question to that. Uh, Councilor Bisco had commented about some of the undeveloped properties, uh, such as at the end of Tenth Street or at the end of Eleventh Street and in those that might potentially access Pippa Lane and therefore Eleventh Street, I believe. Um, some of the ones that are undeveloped and that are not part of the Heather Glen subdivision, but um are there reasons or that we would or wouldn't, benefits or pros and cons to including those properties in an L I D? Chris or Jim?
Uh, so when the engineer determined which projects or which properties to include and to assess or not, that was the question they looked at was which which projects are actually getting special benefit? And the special benefit projects were limited to the projects that have frontage. Um, not to projects, all properties that take access off of Eleventh Street, right? So that was the distinction. There's a general benefit if you take access or if you go to the park or if you use it as a cut-through street, there's some general benefit there. But special benefit, it was limited to um properties that have um adjacent frontage to Eleventh Street.
And yeah, Jim?
It it would be possible, it's a different tool than a local improvement district. And I think uh maybe this is something that a couple of counselors have alluded to. Uh, it would be possible to have some kind of a connection fee uh, that that's working, again, not necessarily off of a special benefit, but off of a a connection benefit. That, yeah, we mo- traffic modeling shows people who live here are going to use this particular route. Uh, we don't have that tool currently. It is one that we could have uh by code amendment.
Got it.
Jim, couldn't that just be a reimbursement district?
It's it it's a, it's a kind of flavor of reimbursement district. Uh, it it typically expects that the city is going to make the um, it is going to do the improvements. Uh, use using a combination of system development charges and whatever other funds are are available. And then it's uh, there there is some assessment methodology. Uh, there's an opportunity to object, very similar things to a local improvement district. But it's not a private party doing the improvement. It's the city doing it.
Good, thank you. And I think, Councilman Lehman, you had a question in relation to that follow-up?
Yes, I did. Yeah, so it it's a little confusing because I thought the methodology behind the S D Cs was basically what what we're talking about, that your part of your S D C fees is basically a reimbursement for the previously made expenditure by the city or by the taxpayers of the city or whatever. So I'm a little confused about that. And then it I I don't know how that would work with an L I D where would they repay to the city, but the city's gotten repayment for the L I D expense from the property owners that were, you know? So for example, if we assess the property at the end of Eleventh Street and it's fourteen years from now, they they finally get around this developing that all the residents on that city have theoretically paid off the amount that they were assessed for the L I D. Now we're going to go to the new property developer and say, oh, there's an access fee. Where does that go? And how does that get back into the hands of the residents that may or may not have changed hands also, you know?
Yeah, I I think again, we're talking about two different things that we probably, uh, if if we were doing some kind of a uh, some flavor of a reimbursement district uh, on a local street, local streets are not really part of uh what you would expect reimbursement S D Cs to go to. They're going to collectors' arterials. But if if there's a connection to a local street and we're using a variety of funding methods, then we'd we'd figure out what part uh, would be the local street equivalent that somebody should be paying for their impact on that local street. And it it would, it wouldn't necessarily be related to the to an L I D, or it it could be something separate. It could be something that's used in combination.
Thanks. Thank you very much. And just note the time, it's six thirty, and hoping we can be wrapping this up about ten minutes for the hour. So, Councilor Bisco.
Um, well, to that point, I'd like to recommend that we come back with a work session on this to some extent, because it it's just a way bigger project than we can really cover in the time we've allotted tonight. Uh, not project, but just discussion, excuse me. Um, I'm curious when hypothetical, we put a local improvement district through on, you know, we're we're using that scenario right now and say that all the streets that we've assessed are the current residential home addresses. Um, I do note that there are three properties for sure that are linear frontage on North Eleventh that weren't included in this original assessment in the first place that was linear footage. And those are the seven hundred block streets, um, including some linear footage for the this five acres that is um actually a ninth street address presently, but it is using Eleventh Street right now as well. And that's the the larger one on the end. So say that we do this assessment, we don't include any of the streets that are undeveloped. It would be very simple for any one number of those properties to go, great, the street's been paid for. And now I can develop this without having to pay uh my portion or my fair share, if that's the word we want to use. And in effect, we're we're subsidizing development then on the current properties that exist and not acknowledging the ones that would be developed coming could be tomorrow, right? We put this local improvement district through, they go again, you know, great, it's already done. Now I can develop without having to run any risk of that. Um, I do think it's interesting that we are proposing a sewer line. So I'm I'm assuming all the houses on North Eleven Street currently have water and sewer services being met. We are proposing a larger sewer and water line project as part of this street. We're proposing that, which basically is acknowledging that we know the development's happening. So we want to invest five hundred and some odd thousand dollars in order to accommodate that. But we're not acknowledging that that development should pay for the street portion of this. And so there's kind of that scenario where I'm I'm not sure that I understand why we would acknowledge development by increasing the water and sewer line, but we won't acknowledge it in a local improvement district discussion. Um, so again, it feels like we're we're just we're not having that bigger conversation. We're certainly only talking in this scenario tonight about one street in particular. There's a lot of other streets that are going to have these conversations happen. Again, there are forty-two total streets, including this one, that are underdeveloped. Um, excuse me, the infrastructure is in is um undeveloped. So it's it's that we're getting bits and pieces here, but we're not really looking at the holistic projects of what are happening. Um, I am hesitant to spend more money on engineering when we don't really know which direction the council wants to go and what the appetite is for developing these streets. I do appreciate that Councilor Kazi brought the idea of sidewalk responsibilities to this property owners perhaps only, and that the city comes up with a funding mechanism somewhere outside of the idea of local improvement districts, whether it's reserves, whether it's gas taxes, whether it's a general obligation bond, that wasn't one of our favorites, but I don't think we should take it off the table. Whether it's segments of urban renewal districts that can elevate all of these streets up to um city standards that we're asking, or whether we go back to Councilman Lehman's um point, which is just why are we doing any of this? And do we need to talk about, you know, housing and infill instead before we really look at at streets in particular? So lots of moving pieces, not enough time. Um, I'd like to see we come back with another work session, come back to some of these other funding opportunities and bring in some of the new conversations with the Campbell Conversation. Um, also with Lehman's comments as well, and also with eight conversations. There's just a lot of moving pieces.
Thank you. And Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Jones. So, you know, looking at this, I I think you know, if we want to have more discussion on local improvement districts in general or or funding sources, I I mean, to be very blunt, I'm I'm kind of out of things that staff can provide and information staff can provide. I don't know. There's a whole lot more that I have to contribute to the conversation. The local improvement district up on North Eleven Street identifies needed improvements. Those needed improvements have been identified as priorities for the city for at least the last two-plus years. Um, nobody else is going to come in and make these improvements. So whether the state has additional mandates for street improvements or housing improvements or developments, nobody else is going to come to the rescue and put up a bunch of money to pay for the street to get improved. So that's really the question before the city council is we've got uh, water pipes and sewer pipes that are undersized to provide for future development. We've got a street that's not built to city standard. Uh, we've got a new park up there. We've got some recent development that's increased traffic, uh, foot, pedestrian and and vehicle traffic on the street substantially. Uh, again, I I think we can make it as complicated as we want to, and we could probably um, talk about this for the next twenty years and not make a decision on it. And I'm not trying to be facetious. I'm just saying there is such a thing as prowess, you know, paralysis by analysis. I I can simplify this down pretty quickly, and that's what I've tried to do in this memo. There's improvements that are needed, a local improvement district, in my opinion, is the best way to fund those. I think our time would be much better spent around looking at how we could assess that. Um, are there additional opportunities that we can put additional funding towards this to bring the assessments down to what seems like a very fair and reasonable assessment for a property owner? We require property owners throughout the city to pay for their sidewalks to be installed without any other process, other than you have three years to install sidewalks. That's been a standard for a long-established policy and standard of the city. So again, to me, the better question is if we can get the assessments down to the equivalent of a sidewalk improvement. And maybe it's a sidewalk improvement plus a little bit extra for the fact that the storm drains going away. Aside, you know, the the street in front of the house is getting installed, lights are getting put in, uh, some street lighting. So, you know, even if it was the cost of your sidewalk plus a little bit extra for the street and curb gutter, storm drainage, street lighting, I think you get to an assessment that seems very fair, very reasonable, and it can be distributed um equitably across the properties on North Eleven Street. And I will just throw in the timing, because I do feel like that's part of our responsibility. Um, I just got an email from the engineer. I'm looking at Landmark Drive today. Um, that project is getting ready to go out for bid. There was an intent to try to bid these two projects at the same time to get some economies of scale and try to save some money and getting one contractor to do both of these projects. If we're not going to do this project, staff needs some direction that we're not going to do the project this summer so that we can take it off of that list of things to get done. If if we're not going to do the project this summer and we're not going to do the L I D, the council just needs to have staff that direction rather than we're just going to keep talking about it, because we do need to we're kind of at the point where we need to decide we're going to do it or we're not. So I do need that direction from the city council. Again, in my mind, it's fairly simple. I think if the, if some direction was given to staff to work with the engineer and work with the city attorney to bring back some assessments that would be equitable and maybe more palatable, getting closer again to that equivalent to a sidewalk improvement. Um, that may be very favorable to this neighborhood and to the city council, but we can't have that discussion if we're going to keep talking about all of the moving parts and all the variables for the next several months out. So I'll just kind of conclude at that. Again, I know we're kind of getting short on time, but I I I think the process can be fairly simple and streamlined. We've not had an opportunity to hear from the community um in a public hearing yet. I think that's an important part of this. Um, we've heard from individuals on the street. I don't know that we've heard collectively from the street as of yet, and I think I'd be curious to do that. Especially if we can get assessments down in that, you know, sidewalk equivalent range. Um, I I agree, if we're talking thirty and forty thousand dollar assessments for a single-family home on Eleventh Street, that's just not palatable. It's not reasonable. Um, but if you can get them down to the eight or ten thousand dollar range for a sidewalk and all these other improvements, to me, that seems much more reasonable and something the city council should consider. Um, as opposed to avoiding considering, because we want to look at all the ins and outs and moving parts. So I'll just conclude with that. Again, happy to answer more questions. I just, I I feel like after a twelve-page memo, I've kind of said what needs to be said to to hopefully put this out in front of the council as best as I can.
Thank you. Councilor Kazi.
Um, I would just um echo what Mr. Workman has said, the one thing that that I don't hear um voiced with respect to an L I D is this is the most expedient um, funding approach to getting this project done. Um, unless the city were to simply to proceed with it outside of an L I D. Um, so you know, if that's the case, if we can get it down to the cost of sidewalks, to me, um, the only outstanding issues then are the treatment of the dowed and uh nuisance properties. And I think that becomes a legal question, I believe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilman Lehman. You're muted.
I think Chris hit on an important um topic, which is the public hearing aspect of this. And it raises a a really good question, in my opinion, and I know his historically and typically, we don't like to have public hearings unless we have a specific issue to have a public hearing about. But I'm very curious to have a public hearing about the concept of L I Ds and the concept of promoting infill and promoting more development or doing whatever we can to discourage more infill and more development and really getting a sense from the public what direction they want to go. And I think we're kind of groping around in the dark, looking for a silver bullet, and we maybe don't even know what the target is that we're going to shoot the bullet at. So if it's possible to have a public hearing, even though we don't have a specific assessment table or a specific engineer's report that we've all agreed on, I I would still like to have a public hearing and give the public an opportunity to come in and express their opinion. I know we've gotten some emails from a few people, but it's only been a a very few people. Um, so if I can encourage us to have a public hearing, I would like to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilor Nielsen.
It's been a really informative evening this evening, and this work session's been really helpful. Um, there's been a lot of comments, comments by Council Councilman Lehman and Council Bisco. I agree that those seven homes that are valued at under a hundred and fifty, that's a great concern. What will their assessment be and how will it be manageable? Um, Chris's words of getting that assessment down to a sidewalk cost plus a little more is is very hope hopeful, um, although we don't have those exact figures yet. But I do kind of agree with Councilman Lehman as far as we those undeveloped properties, they still seem to be like a thorn in my side as to how to make it fair. How do we make that fair? Those undeveloped properties, we put this through as Council Bisco was mentioning. And without them having a real financial input in that And without them having a real financial input in that improvement, and then voila, we have. Other developments going in then benefiting from those expenditures. I think there needs to be some other. We talked about at the beginning of the meeting, but maybe there's another way that we could figure out how to make it equitable. And so that would be my concern. I don't totally think that it's not reasonable to have an L I D, but I do think we need to. Have more information, which maybe means that engineering report to give us that. Ideas about underdeveloped and undeveloped properties and how we can, how they could be assessed in another manner.
Thank you. And I'm just going to jump in for a moment to offer my perspective while we have just a little bit of time, but. Some of my concerns are that. We have these rules that have been in place for years. About development and what they should be responsible for. And we have property owners who have come in and developed with those rules in place. And in my mind, I feel that it's important that we honor the. Rules that the folks came in with and have developed with. So therefore, I feel like it would be irresponsible of the city to ask the other. City residents to pay for. Streets that others are already responsible for. That's what I struggle with. I don't have the answer, but. You know, in my mind, I would just love to see those that street improves and the sidewalks installed where they're supposed to be installed right now. But. I just want to make sure that we don't leave it and then have no improvements in ten years where we're still struggling. Because we could make, come to a conclusion now. But that's just something that I've been thinking about. And Counsel Bisco, and I'm just going to ask you to keep it short. I want to be done with, I would like to close this out in about six minutes. So I, Counselor Causey is waiting after you, so. You just take about two or three minutes, it'd be great.
Thank you. So just a couple of points that are super relevant to this discussion, and one of them is, is that. The Heather Glenn development is bound by conditions of approval. Which require it to improve its sections of streets. And so that's important that we segment that out. I'm not sure that it's appropriate in any way to be talking about Heather Glenn as part of a local improvement district. I do think it is important that we capture the seven hundred block streets that are not developed at this time, but they are, they're segmented out as smaller. Properties that are buildable. They're not a part of this. Any of these assessments at any of these points. To date, they've not come up on this. And so I'd like to propose that we do in fact capture those as well. So just those two points, and then I I won't rehash a lot of the stuff that I put together in that. Summary document, but it really does capture a lot of the nuances that are hard to capture in this meeting right here. So going back to that might provide to be. Assistance to the council as well, and just want to encourage that engagement. With those statements that are kind of summary from the public works committee as well, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Counselor Causey?
I just have two, one question and one thought that I wanted to share, I guess. My question is. I wish the engineers were here now and we could ask them. Why they specifically included these properties? Why did they not include any of the undeveloped properties? It would, Chris, I know that you summarized your thoughts on this, but it would be helpful. To understand if we request a new report. Is it really going to come back with a different set of properties or the same set of properties? You've spoken of special benefits and general benefits, and. If these are the only specially benefited properties, I wouldn't expect the list of properties used. To differ. And then perhaps we need to adopt something like. Counsel Bisco had suggested some kind of a connection theme. The other thought I have, which is. Unrelated to the L I D discussion, but. In my opinion, the federal government has funneled more stimulus money into the economy. As a result of the pandemic, then certainly then I'll probably see in my lifetime. So with respect to lending alternatives that might require us to go to the voters to solicit. Additional funds to get their approval for additional funds for additional taxes. If I were a voter, I would be inclined to think. Why don't you know how to use the funds you have? You have extraordinary funds available to you right now. And I'm not, I would be hard pressed to support a vote for additional taxes at this time.
Thank you. So with that, Chris, did you want to close this out or I? Were you, he's spoken your piece?
Yeah, I just real quick of the answer, I I wouldn't anticipate to Counselor Causey's kind of question, I wouldn't anticipate. An amended engineer's report to add an additional properties unless we were going to expand. The the scope of the L I D north of Eleventh Street, I I wouldn't see that we would argue that they've got a. Special benefit. So I I think it would be limited to the same number of properties. To me, the benefit of of an amended. Engineer's report would take into account some of these assessment issues and I. I guess I'll end, that was kind of where I ended. Mine was some bullet points of other considerations that council could take into account, such as. You know, for the properties on the far south have two frontages. Take that into account and and charge them half an assessment that's been done in other jurisdictions for other L I Ds. That that would substantially help those two southernmost properties and put them more aligned with what others on the. Within the L I D would be assessed. You know, there there are several considerations to be made here. Again, I I think the council, the city engineer and the city attorney could. Bring something back that would be pretty favorable for the neighborhood and for the council to consider. But to do that, I I need some direction. So the council's got to take some steps. We can't do that in the work session, so. You know, if we get to the city council meeting, if that's something that any member of the council is interested in, we could entertain a motion when we get to the council meeting, but. You know, otherwise. Inaction will kind of speak if if we don't have any. Motions to move forward with a special assessment for improvements in North Eleven Street, then. We'll just pull this project off of the schedule for the summer and and. Look to do landmark drive kind of as a standalone project. And we'll kind of wait to hear back from the council. So I, you know, inaction is action, and I'll just kind of. Take it as that, I guess. And again, I'm happy to answer more questions. I don't want to say I don't have anything more to contribute. I just, I don't know as far as providing additional information, what more I've got to contribute to this. Unless there's some specific questions of other programs, other things that we should be looking at.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our work session this evening. And we can come back at seven o'clock to have our city council meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned.